Regular meeting number 42 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Stenziano, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Richard Ellsworth, please come forward and lead us in prayer. Welcome back to council, Reverend.
I'm trying to find my back too.
First, may I just say again, thank you for your recognition. The last time I stood here, I appreciate it. I want to warn you that when you put a retired chaplain or pastor out to pastor, you better lock the gate, otherwise he comes wandering back in again. Maybe we pray together.
We'll get you back.
Creator God, it seems as if we've seen the morning badge on law enforcement all too often across this nation of ours lately, including our own Officer Smith. At times, it seems they have targets on their back rather than ribbons of courage and commitment. But we pray that you will continue to bless them, as the vast majority of the public appreciates all that they and first responders do every day to keep us safe. And we thank you and ask your blessing upon this administrative body, as it provides the resources making it possible for Columbus to have the best public service. This is a great city in which to live, working together, those who govern and those who are governed. May we create an atmosphere that makes and continues to make Columbus the finest community for anyone. And we pause tonight, too, to remember those who serve in our armed forces, asking that you will keep them safe as they keep us safe every day and night. And we offer all our thanks in your wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's office are listed on the agenda. They'll be published in the City bulletin. Any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
How about resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Yes, President Klein, thank you. I have two resolutions this evening. The first is to recognize and honor the dedication and service of the City of Columbus's refuse collection workers. So could James Spencer and Katrina Whitlock please come up while I get started here? Resolution 0190X-2016 is to recognize our refuse workers. I'm going to read a little bit from the resolution here before we hear from our speakers. The Department, Columbus City Council and Mayor DeWitt Clinton Badger established the Department of Garbage and Refuge Collection in 1906. And the department has since become the Division of Refuge Collection and is absolutely integral to Columbus's infrastructure. The Division of Refuge Collection currently employs more than 200 individuals who work tirelessly to provide year-round, weekly trash service in all weather conditions to more than 335,000 households in the City of Columbus. The Division of Refuge Collection works each day to be a leader in municipal solid waste management by exploring and utilizing new collection methods and technologies for greater cost effectiveness and operating efficiencies without sacrificing service to the public. The outreach and dedication of refuse workers is a vital part of the public health of our city, and the continued efforts of these workers help the city maintain safety and well-being of our citizens. The work of refuse collection employees often goes unrecognized, and that's why I'm thrilled to be here tonight presenting this resolution, because that does not diminish the substantial impact of their work on the health of our environment and the well-being of our communities. So Ms. Whitlock and Mr. Spencer, if you have anything to add, we would love to hear from you.
Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, President Klein, and members of the City Council, thank you for this recognition of the hard-working employees in the Division of Refuge Collection. My name is Katrina Whitlock, and I am the District Manager of the Morris Road Transfer Station in this division. And I'm here with Jim Spencer, and he is the District Manager of the Georgia-Sel Road Station. We are pleased to be able to accept this resolution on behalf of our colleagues. Our colleagues provide a critical service, as you said, to the city residents, and we believe it is only fitting that we or they be recognized for their work. The Division of Refuge Collection provides weekly trash service to more than 330,000 households weekly. The Division also manages the city's residential recycling and yard waste collection programs, as well as we house the Keep Columbus Beautiful program. Our colleagues keep trash picked up and help keep the city clean, and I know I speak for them in thanking you all for this wonderful acknowledgement of the importance of their work. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, President Klein, and members of the City Council, we thank you.
Thank you.
You good? Okay. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
All right. All right, and my second resolution tonight, if David Miller could come to the podium as I start here, it is resolution 0191X-2016 to express support for the establishment of a national goal to reach more than 50% clean and carbon-free electricity production by 2030 for the purpose of avoiding the worst impacts of climate change, growing our economy, increasing our shared prosperity, improving public health, and preserving our national security. Failing to act on climate change will have a devastating impact on our nation's economy, resulting in billions of dollars in lost GDP, as well as increased costs from infrastructure repairs and recovery efforts that will significantly increase budget deficits and undermine fiscal stability. Inaction on climate change will disproportionately impact communities of color and exacerbate existing economic inequalities. The transition to clean energy is feasible with existing technology and will truly save lives and improve public health. As of 2014, 89,000 Ohioans are working at 7,200 clean energy businesses, with more than 50% employed in installation, maintenance, manufacturing, and assembly. The City of Columbus procured 15.6% of electricity used in city operations from renewable sources in 2015 and is working towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 30% from city operations and 20% from the community by the year 2020. I'm very proud of our green team who has led that effort and thankful to have David Miller here today, who is with Next Gen Climate and working on these efforts across the state of Ohio.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. David Miller, I'm here with Next Gen Climate, and I'm proud to accept this resolution from the Columbus City Council in support of the national plan to move to 50% clean energy by 2030. It's an ambitious but achievable goal that's going to create jobs, grow the GDP, and help our environment. Columbus has always been a leader in the state and will continue to be so by supporting this goal. By 2030, with our economy moving to 50% clean energy use, Ohio will see an increase in the gross state product of over $9.5 billion, and that's pretty impressive. That's a pretty big number that we can see growth in, and we're excited to move towards that. In Ohio, a 50% transition to clean energy will result in an increase of 56,000 jobs by 2030 as well, and so that's pretty impressive, and we're excited to move in that direction. So, thank you all very much.
Great. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Thank you, Council President Klein. Sergeant Whitaker, would you please come to the podium this evening to a resolution of expression to recognize the 33rd Annual National Night Out and to commend the Columbus Area Sports Sponsors and Participants for their dedicated efforts in crime prevention and crime building. Whereas the 33rd Annual National Night Out is sponsored by the National Association of Town Watch and locally co-sponsored by the Columbus Division of Police, and the National Association of Town Watch established National Night Out, America's Night Out Against Crime, in 1984. National Night Out is meant to increase awareness of crime, drugs, and violence, to facilitate local cooperation and support for crime prevention in smaller communities, to bolster neighborhood unity, and to show criminals that communities are actively participating in the fight against crime. National Night Out brings citizens together, law enforcement agencies, civic groups, businesses, neighborhood organizations, and local officials and leaders to pursue this mission, and celebrating National Night Out once a year enables residents to become more familiar with their neighborhoods and their neighbors, different and varied resources available to them, in securing safety and prosperity in their communities. With that, Sergeant Whitaker, would you like to make some comments, please?
Absolutely, sir. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to you, Councilmember Brown, for this proclamation, President Klein, and the rest of the City Council. As you know, Tuesday, August 2nd, is National Night Out. It is a night for residents, police, and city officials to come together and put an end to crime. This event will be celebrated by cities and neighborhoods throughout the United States and could not be happening at a better time. The main focus of National Night Out is to heighten crime prevention awareness, generate more participation in local anti-crime programs, strengthen neighborhood pride and police community relations, and finally, to send a message to the criminals, letting them know that our neighborhoods are organized and fighting back. This year, Columbus City Council has again awarded grants to community groups to assist them in National Night Out and help pay for supplies such as UV pens, whistles, and other block watch necessities. Also, City Council purchased T-shirts and banners to pass out to the community groups. National Night Out is a good time to get out of the house and meet or get reacquainted with neighbors. This year, there will be more than 150 activities throughout the city, from the porch light vigils, neighborhood walks, cleanups, and cookouts. I would like to urge everyone to get ahold of your local block watch leaders or neighborhood liaison officers to find an event close to you. Let's all make this another successful year of National Night Out. Thank you.
Also, if I may, Council President, whereas the Columbus Division of Police Community Liaison Section is deserving of a special recognition and commendation for the work they do to ensure the success of this event, National Night Out is only one example of the constant effort to serve the citizens of Columbus and to strengthen police and community relations. If there are no questions, be my guest.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. As it relates to National Night Out, I see a lot of wonderful community leaders here, but I do want to shout out Lisa Boggs, Ogden Avenue, who does a terrific National Night Out. And it is a wonderful, a wonderful opportunity to get to know your neighbors, to get to know your friends, and to all join together in that collaborative community spirit to fight crime and look out for each other, which I think is the soul of America that sometimes is lost, is the ability for us just to look out and have each other's back. So, thank you, Chair.
Also, Marty Grace over there, who came up and made sure I knew that she was appreciative of the fact that we're doing National Night Out. Put your hand up, Marty. Thank you. If there are no other questions from my colleagues, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Tonight, I'm going to start with a resolution from last week, actually, and I would like to invite up Tawana McFann, Kristin Finner, Rick Clay, Patty Austin, Larry Williams, Dwayne Crabtree, Von Dowling, Sarah Moore, from the Department of Public Utilities, to the podium, as I introduce, from last week's agenda, resolution 0178-2016 to recognize and celebrate August 26, 2016, as the National Line Worker Day in the City of Columbus. So as I think those that were here last night, or last week, and those that made it today, we clearly had a scheduling mix-up, and I apologize that we got our wires crossed. The jokes don't get better than that. Thank you, Patty. We tried. In the City of Columbus and every town in America, line workers constantly put themselves at risk to ensure reliable access to electricity for all by serving as first responders after natural disasters, including hurricanes, tornadoes, blizzards, and other events that can disrupt utilities. They put their lives on the line every day with little recognition from the community regarding the danger of their work. The City of Columbus recognizes how critical line workers are to keeping the city running and is an honor to recognize August 26 as National Line Worker Appreciation Day in Columbus. So it's with great pleasure that I'm going to present this resolution to you all here today, as well as the line workers you represent. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, then I would move for passage.
Councilmember, did we move and pass that last week?
I guess we did move and pass it. So we'll just keep rolling. Apologize.
So let it be known that it is acknowledged and adopted.
I don't know if Tawana or Patty want to take the podium to speak to it?
Councilmember Stenziano, President Klein, and members of council, thank you very much for this honor that you give us every year as for National Line Workers Week. I think today, when we're all complaining about how hot it is, I think it's a great example of what people like Rick and his crews put up with every single day, working in extreme conditions, in the cold, in the hot, and get the job done every day, so I really commend them and all of our colleagues in the Department of Public Utilities who do that also, also our refuse colleagues, and our colleagues in public service who do that every single day. So, thank you very much.
Next, I would like to invite Bill Connor, Indiana Pagon, from the Festival Latino, to please come forward to the podium, as I introduce resolution 0189-2016 to recognize and celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Festival Latino in the City of Columbus. This festival began as a five-hour event 20 years ago and has since grown to a weekend festival that showcases the Latino culture and community in the City of Columbus. I, along with all my colleagues, but in particular Chairwoman Page, who chairs the Recreation and Parks Committee, would like to acknowledge what a cultural asset the festival has been to our city for the past 20 years and wish you continued success in the next 20 years and beyond. This year's festival will be held Saturday, August 13, and Sunday, the 14th, and I don't know if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I'll move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And at this time, the podium's all yours.
Well, thank you, President Klein, Councilmembers Stenziano, Tyson, Brown, Brown, Harden, Page. All of you guys have all been very supportive of the Latino Festival here in Columbus, and I know I'm very proud to be a part of it and to know that it is the largest free, family-centric Latino festival in the state of Ohio, and that we get to celebrate the 20th anniversary. This is actually the 20th year that I've been in Columbus, Ohio, so it's definitely a great year to celebrate, and we love to see the continued growth of it through our entertainment. Every year, we bring international artists, who are Grammy Award-winning artists, people who come from all over the state of Ohio, who come from as far as New York, Florida, even Puerto Rico, to see our free concerts. And so, thank you for allowing us that opportunity. I know there's a lot of things that I'm excited for in the children's area, in the health and wellness area. This year, we'll be giving, doing free mammograms, we'll be doing free HIV/STD screenings, diabetes screenings, delicious food. We have a lot of Latino small businesses that support it, so we're really excited about the continued growth of it.
And thank you to City Council. There would be no Festival Latino without City Council. I think we all know. There's been some ups and downs back in the fiscal days, and everybody came together and helped us get through that, and we can never thank you enough. Without it, we had over a quarter of a million people last year. It was unbelievable. Our police department thinks that we'll have 350,000 this year, because what's happening is, it's all word of mouth in the Latino community. Each year, it's growing by 100, 100, 100. So, and as Deanna said, this is the largest Latino festival in Ohio, and it's become an Ohio festival. So we're drawing from Cleveland, and Akron, Lorraine, Toledo, Springfield, Dayton, Cincinnati. I mean, our range is wonderful, so our deep thanks.
President Pro, Tim Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano, for bringing this resolution to the floor. It is just a fabulous event, and so I'm so glad that you now have your 20th anniversary, and that's important, because lots of festivals don't get to that point, so congratulations. I also want to say, Bill, thank you. I'm so glad to see you back in council chambers and so glad to see you're doing so well. You have been missed, and so, so glad you're back and doing well. And again, look forward to a great event, as it always is, and I would invite all of our viewing and listening audiences to please come. I think they'll have a fabulous time just getting to meet and know new people in our community and to see the great diversity of our community. So, hopeful people will come out to this event. Thank you.
And finally, President Klein, I'd like to invite Sam Runta with the University Area Commission to come up to the podium very briefly. Sam and the University Area Commission have been working on an issue regarding lewd signs and banners that have recently popped up around the university area during freshman, freshman, freshman move-in week. Clearly, these signs do not represent our city or the Ohio State University in a good light, and I invited Sam to share more of his and the University Area Commission's work on addressing this issue. Podium's all yours, Sam.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano. So, as he said, we've been working with this issue for a couple of months now. There have been issues of inappropriate signs and banners popping up all over the off-campus area, and these are clearly targeted at young women. You know, obviously, it's intended as a joke, but many of us in the community did not see it that way, so we are responding with a press release that we're going to be sending around to press contacts, The Lantern, and then also trying to get it as public as possible. And then additionally, we're encouraging all residents in the university district, if they see any violations, to call 311 or get in contact with a commissioner, and we'll handle it for them. But, so here's the press release for you guys. The University Area Commission released the following statement on Wednesday. "With freshman move-in day quickly approaching in the university district, the area commission asks that residents refrain from hanging suggestive or sexually explicit signs over their houses, and that they bear in mind that the university district is a vibrant neighborhood made up of many age, gender, ethnic, religious, and social groups. Such a diverse community can only be maintained by genuine respect for all those that live in it. The commission has unfortunately received complaints from neighbors in previous years of inappropriate signs and banners displayed in the area surrounding campus with the intent of grabbing the attention of passersby. These banners just signal disrespect," states Community Relations Committee Chair Deb Supalak, "disrespect for neighbors, disrespect for community members driving through, disrespect to students' parents, and especially disrespect for the women being targeted by the signs." Additionally, code enforcement supervisor John Hughes stresses that the posting of large banners without proper authorization from the City of Columbus is a violation of city code. While such authorization is possible to obtain for certain signs, lewd or inappropriate signage, quote, "will never make it through this process and won't be approved," so they're essentially illegal, and code enforcement will issue orders to the property owners to remove them. University District landlords also note that many of the occupants who hang banners over their houses are in violation of their lease agreements. So all residents are encouraged to contact the City of Columbus at 614-645-3111 to report any distressing or illegal signs, or email the University Area Commission at commissioners@universityarea.org with any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Sam. Do my colleagues have any statements? Council President Klein?
Thank you, Commissioner. If I could just have Director Shoney, because code reports up to the director, he's over your right shoulder there, just to be a little bit more vigilant with code, especially during freshman move-in week, and if we could at least have council requests to increase patrol in the university area to make sure we don't have any of these signs popping up, which clearly are, as a father of a four-year-old daughter, makes anyone concerned, but especially someone who's raising a girl in this city, to make sure that we don't have any of that inappropriate language and banners. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, President Klein.
Nothing else at this time, President Klein?
Thank you. Yes, I have two resolutions. The first one is 0184X-2016. I'm going to ask Dr. Meadows, I'm going to ask Shiro Graffanino and Barb Sekler to walk towards the podium. And this resolution is to recognize and to congratulate the Ohio State University Franklin County Office for Local Foods Week. Whereas Ohio Local Foods Week is being celebrated throughout Ohio from August 7 through the 13th of 2016 in order to bring greater awareness of the nutritional, economic, and social benefits of local food in Ohio. And whereas healthy eating is vital to building a healthy regional food system in the City of Columbus and addressing obesity and related chronic illnesses can be enhanced through the greater consumption of fruits, vegetables, whole grains, and other locally-produced foods. And whereas the City of Columbus and Franklin County are home to more than 250 community gardens, 25 farmers' markets, 388 farms, 15 urban farms, and many food-related businesses, as well as numerous county organizations that address issues related to food production, nutrition, and food with respect to business development for the residents of the City of Columbus. Whereas farms in Franklin County and the City of Columbus generate more than $48 million in cash receipts each year, providing significant economic output into our county. And whereas the City of Columbus supports a number of community initiatives which develop, expand, and strengthen a local food system that is accessible, resilient, environmentally compatible, socially just, including the Local Food Action Plan, co-sponsored by the City of Columbus, which is currently underway. And whereas consumers and farmers benefit from an expanded local food system, which includes a direct sale of food products from farmers to consumers, the development of value-added food products by local businesses in Franklin County, and institutional purchases of locally-produced foods directly from farmers, like the Ohio Farm-to-School Program. And whereas consumers can make a substantial positive impact on regional, local, and state economies by purchasing food from local farms and producers. And whereas the City of Columbus encourages citizens to commit to the $10 Local Foods Challenge during Local Food Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City, the Council of the City of Columbus, this council does hereby recognize and congratulate Ohio State University Extension Franklin County Office for Local Foods Week. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, Dr. Meadows. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Council President Pro, Tim Tyson, Council President Klein, and members of council. Thank you very much for the opportunity for being here today. On behalf of OSU Extension, as well as our partners, we would like to thank you for recognizing Local Foods Week here in Columbus. In an effort to provide you with some additional information regarding similar events, both Local Foods Week and other events that are going on, you should have received a document, a couple of documents that we shared earlier. I just want to bring your attention really quickly.
I just want to bring your attention really quickly. We have Local Foods Week scheduled from July 30th to August 14th, and that's a document here. And then, we also have our ongoing Urban Farm Tour Series that we would love to invite you to participate in. The next tour series will take place at Clearfield Farm on August 6th. We also have our Master Urban Farmer Program starting very soon, and that will begin on September 8th. And lastly, we hope that you will find the Columbus Local Foods Guide as an excellent resource for you to locate different farmer's markets and CSAs around the county. So again, we thank you so much for this resolution, and we invite you and hope that you will join us at some of our upcoming events.
Thank you. Do you want to share with us about the $10 Local Foods Challenge?
My colleague Barbara's going to share that.
Thank you.
Council President Klein, Council President Pro Tem Tyson, and members of council, thanks so much for having us tonight. It's a great summer for local food, and we are so glad at Columbus Public Health to have OSU Extension as such a great partner. You mentioned community gardens. You helped begin the investment program back in 2010. Since then, council has invested more than $130,000 in community gardens across Columbus. This year alone, 26 gardens have been helped and might not be doing what they're doing without your support, from the Three Sisters Gardens in Linden, to the Friends of the Hilltop on the west side, to Marion Village Civic Association on the south side, and to the Wyland Park Civic Garden in the near north. So, thank you so much for that. And I also want to thank you, Councilmember Tyson, for being such a terrific champion over the years of urban agriculture and community gardens. They are now so well-positioned to be part of local food systems as we move forward with very exciting plans, so thank you.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem Tyson, Council President Klein, and members of council. I would like to also thank you for this resolution and for recognizing and continuing to commit to local foods as a tool for improving our economic development. As Dr. Meadows mentioned, the $10 Challenge for our residents is a great opportunity for folks in Columbus to dedicate some of their dollars that they spend every week on groceries to a local farmer. So, visiting a farmer's market, a farm stand, looking at a CSA, any of those opportunities that help keep some of those dollars that are spent on food in our community, in our community, and supporting our community, because local food is a tool for community revitalization, as well as a great tool for improving access to affordable and healthy food for all of our residents. I would like to thank Councilmember Tyson for her ongoing support and her leadership in the Local Food Action Plan, and I thank you for this resolution on behalf of our partners in that planning process, including Franklin County Economic Development Planning, myself and my colleagues at Columbus Public Health, and also Local Matters. Thank you.
Thank you. And individuals can come out and start supporting local food, but the $10 Challenge at the farmer's market, this will be a kickoff even starting this week, and every Thursday after that, Thursday, July 28th, at Columbus Public Health, from 10 to 1 o'clock, you can come and start buying your local foods from our farmer's market.
Stop by, and I'll give you a personal tour of the farmers.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and my next resolution is Resolution Number 0187X-2016, and I'm going to ask for the CEO of Primary One Health, Shalita Tavares, and Yolanda Owens, the Communications Coordinator, to come to the podium, and is to declare the week of August 7th through the 13th of 2016 as National Health Center Week in the city of Columbus. And whereas America's community health centers for over 50 years have provided high-quality, cost-effective, and accessible primary and preventative care to individuals regardless of their health insurance status or their ability to pay. And whereas health centers serve as the health care home for over 23 million Americans, having more than 9,000 delivery sites across this nation, in fact, one in every 15 people living in the United States depends on these services, one in 15. Whereas health centers are typically located in medically underserved areas and are controlled locally by patient-majority boards, thus making each health center responsive to the needs of a specific community that it serves. And whereas more than 11,300 physicians and more than 8,400 nurse practitioners, physicians' assistants, and certified nurse midwives are employed by health centers as a part of a multidisciplinary clinical team designed to treat the whole patient, coordinating care, managing chronic disease, while reducing unnecessary, avoidable, and wasteful uses of health resources at the same time. And whereas health centers save the American health system approximately $24 billion annually through the management of chronic conditions that keep patients out of the costlier healthcare settings. And whereas the National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, their dedicated staff, and their committed board members, and all of the individuals who are responsible for continuing their success and growth of America's health centers since their first created more than 50 years ago. Moreover, during the National Health Center Week of 2016, we will celebrate the legacy of America's health centers and their vital role in shaping the future of America's healthcare system. And whereas this year, the city of Columbus will applaud and celebrate Primary One Health during National Health Center Week, specifically because of the impact that Primary One Health has made on the residents and communities in central Ohio, as well as recognize extraordinary efforts of the physicians, nurse practitioners, physicians' assistants, certified midwives, and numerous critical team members who continue to work together to improve the quality of healthcare for those living in the city of Columbus and central Ohio. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, this council does hereby recognize the importance of the America's community health centers, and hereby declares August 7th through August 13th of 2016 as the National Healthcare Center Week in the city of Columbus. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Ms. Tavares, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Pro Tem Tyson, President Klein, members of council. On behalf of the board, the 14-member board of Primary One Health and the more than 250 staff members of our organization, we thank you for recognizing National Health Center Week. On behalf of one of 46 health centers in the state of Ohio, and as Council President Pro Tem Tyson shared, one of 1,300 in the country, we are very proud of the work that we do, and certainly are proud of the 50-year history of federally-qualified health centers in America. We were one of the federal War on Poverty programs initiated by President Lyndon B. Johnson, and so, we're proud of that history, we're proud of the more than 37,000 patients that we serve each and every year at Primary One Health at one of our 10 locations. And I do want to recognize one of our board members, who is an ex officio board member representing Columbus Public Health, Nancy Bechtel, for the wonderful work that she does on behalf of the city of Columbus. We're very proud of this national recognition, and certainly the recognition of Columbus City Council, and I'm going to turn it over to our new marketing and development coordinator, Yolanda Owens, to share a little bit more about what will happen that week.
President Pro Tem Tyson and President Klein, thank you so much for having us here today. And during this week, although it is the same week as Local Foods Week, but there's a lot going on during this week that we can celebrate both, because food is such an important part of health as well. During this week, on that Tuesday, we'll be hosting a school supply drive during that day, excuse me, a giveaway on that Tuesday. All of you should have some documentation of that at our location, that's at the John Maloney Center, there during the day, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. Also, during that week, we'll have some giveaways as well for our homeless population, which is part of how we were founded as a federally-qualified health center, so we'll be giving away some hygienic products to our homeless population as well. And with the partnerships that we have throughout the entire month, because the whole month will be celebrating federally-qualified health centers, we also have some produce market giveaways that we partner with Mid-Ohio Food Bank, and we also do some partnerships as well with OSU and the extension, as well as OSU Medical Center, and hosting cooking classes and working with the farm that we have behind our west-side center as well. That's part of the Farm Tour with Local Foods Week. So, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your resolution, so thank you so much. Also, you have a document for Need a Doctor, We're Here to Help, and they have 10 different places where you can get services from Primary One. Thank you. And just lastly, I just want to take this opportunity to thank my council colleagues for their support for the National Black Caucus of Local Electoral Conference that we had last week. I can just tell you that my colleagues from across the country were just very pleased, this was the best conference ever, that they had the opportunity to see a beautiful, clean city, and that we are doing amazing work helping the residents of our community. We had great sessions, one on infant mortality, Restoration Academy, we did a great mobile tour of Reeb Avenue, and then we went over to the Near East Side where we had the $30 Million Choice Grant and the Work of PAC. We focused on reentry, we had a session on police and community relations, and I could just go on and on and on. But they were so thrilled to be in Columbus. We had an excellent, wonderful conference. And I need to thank a number of departments, because this wasn't just Columbus City Council. We've been working on this for a year, and there were a number of departments that really helped with this. Public service, community relations, civil service, recreation parks, public safety, so, let's just to name a few of the departments that supported this event. So, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I just really appreciate that my council colleagues came out and participated and made this a great conference. So, thanks again. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson, and I think our congratulations goes to you for putting on a successful conference and showcasing our city to such a prestigious group of elected officials from across the country. And I know that some staff members like Rolanda Hampton and Nancy Sully were also there and put in their time and effort to make it successful, yeah, and of course, your staff. So, we really appreciate what you've done. And I also, since I mentioned Nancy, want to recognize the fact that her son Hunter just graduated from the University of Dayton with a master's degree, and, oh, she just came in, there she is, a master's degree in psychology, and she's a new grandma to a baby boy Harper, so congratulations, Nancy, on that as well. I do have one resolution. I'd like to invite Laura Komek up. It's 193X-2016, to honor/recognize the National Association of Women Business Owners, Columbus Ohio Chapter, for empowering women entrepreneurs to reach greater economic, political, and social heights. In my time on council, I've had the pleasure and privilege of participating in some of the activities associated with NABO, and I know that Ms. Komek is a terrific community leader and participant in that, so Ms. Komek, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein, members of council. On behalf of the entire Board of Directors of NABO Columbus, I want to thank you for the recognition for our organization. This is a really good time for our organization, and I feel like it is reflective of all the really good things that are happening in our community. I can't tell you for how long I have heard that we work to make Columbus a great place to live, work, and raise a family, and our ladies of NABO Columbus take that very seriously. Over the last several years, we've seen tremendous growth in our organization. We're the largest chapter in the country out of 60 chapters. We have almost 250 members. We span more than 25 industry groups. We have thousands of employees and have more than $100 million in annual revenue, and those are just the fancy statistics. A number of our ladies are very community and civic-minded, serving on a number of the boards for groups that have been recognized this evening, and I feel like the growth of our organization is directly attributable to the work that you do, and we appreciate the recognition. This Friday is our annual visionary awards luncheon, where we recognize a number of outstanding women business owners here in central Ohio, and our theme is Smart Women, Smart City, and you've laid the groundwork for that very well, so we appreciate that effort. This is the 20th year for NABO Columbus, and it's a good time to get involved. We've taken tremendous efforts to provide resources, to have active policy initiatives, and this September, we're actually hosting the National Women's Business Conference here, September 17th through 21st. So, thank you again, thank you for your support, and we appreciate being the resource for you with regard to small business initiatives, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Komek? Seeing none, can I get a motion for adoption? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, Ms. Komek.
Thank you very much.
Any more resolutions or comments for my colleagues? How about any comments from our municipal elected officials or members of the administration? The auditor?
Thank you, President Klein. I will, I have, I believe, this evening, delivered to you an annual report on the bonds and notes of the city of Columbus. If you don't have them on your desk, in your mailbox, I will be following up on that with a more detailed report during your time off this August, and I just urge you all to pay attention to the outstanding bonds and notes of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. Treasurers' Office, City Attorney's Office, the Honorable Judge Barrows.
At this time, thank you, President Klein.
Members of the administration, any comments? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance, 1772-2016, 1789, 1827, 1834, 1840, 1843, 1849, 1878, 1879, 1912, 1921, 1936, 1974, 1980, and 1907-2016. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance, 1973-2016. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 1975, 1991-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance, 1971-2016. Small and Minority Business Development Committee ordinance, 1760-2016. Housing Committee ordinance is 1989 and 1990-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1380, 1702, and 1753-2016.
Thank you, clerk. May I have a motion to waive second reading on those items on tonight's agenda for first reading? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Second reading is waived. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read in the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of expression, 0192X, 0188X, and 0186X-2016. Administration Committee ordinance, 1928-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance, 1888-2016. Technology Committee ordinance is 1751, 1833, and 1877-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1432, 1662, 1688, 1698, 1699, 1703, 1720, 1750, 1781, 1808-2016. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0116, 117, 118, 119, 120, 121, 122, 123, 124, 115, 126, 127, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, and 137-2016.
Thank you again, Clerk Leavens. We don't have any speakers tonight on the consent action portion of the agenda, so may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll?
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table and emergency legislation. The first committee is... The first committee is the Finance Committee. President Protam Tyson chairs that committee. President Protam Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. I have the first ordinance in finance is 1871-2016, is to authorize and direct the Director of Finance and Management to modify existing contract with KNS Services, Inc., to authorize expenditure of $168,943 from the previously established contract and to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code. And I'm going to ask Director Lombardi to please make comments on this legislation.
Thank you, President Protam Tyson, President Klein, members of council. This ordinance is upgrading the security system at our municipal court building. Currently, KNS Services, Inc. provides software and technical support for security at various city facilities, including City Hall, the Health Department, Arling Gate Recreation Centers, the Jerry Hammond Center, and will be also in the new Mayor Michael B. Coleman Government Building that is going up as we speak. We did an assessment of the municipal court security system and found that their system is in need of upgrades and software upgrades, and we think it is in the best interest of the city to stay on the same platform that all of our other facilities are on, and we are modifying the contract with KNS so that we can provide the same technology to the municipal court building as we are at our other city facilities. I think Judge Barrows may have some additional comments on this.
Thank you, Director Lombardi.
President Protam Tyson, President Council, members of council, we had a problem. We had aging machines that were not recording. I don't know of another agency associated with city government that has the traffic that we do and the potential security problems that we do. People come into our building and they are charged with crimes, and so having good security in place is important. We found that a number of our video recording devices were not recording, that our servers were not maintaining or keeping those recordings when they were made. When we found this out, we got ahold of the Finance Department. Director Lombardi and specifically Ann Kelly of the Finance Department were extremely helpful, jumped on this problem very quickly, and we are very, the only reason I'm speaking to you is to tell you how much I have appreciated the cooperation of the Finance Department in helping us solve this very serious problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Now, I'd like to go to page three. All right. All right. So, page three. The first ordinance is 1772-2016, to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to establish the purchase orders of certain vendors for vehicle acquisition and upfitting and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $214,961.16. And this particular ordinance will provide vendors and vehicle acquisition, upfitting for vehicles acquisition for the Division of Fire, Police, Finance and Management Facilities, and Environmental. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. My next ordinance is 1789-2016, is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract for the option to purchase power transmission parts and related items with applied industrial technologies and to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish a contract from the general fund. And I would, this is for use to maintain pump engines and equipment used throughout all of our facilities, and I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance will be ordinance number 1827-2016, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into one universal term contract for the option to purchase protective footwear with Grainger, Inc., to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish a contract for the general fund. This contract will provide city employees with a variety of boots and shoes with safety toes and other safety and comfort features to provide protection while performing their job duties, and this estimated expenditure is $250,000, and I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next one is 1834-2016, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into one universal term contract for the option to purchase footwear with outdoor source to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish a contract from the general fund. Estimated expenditure is $250,000, and again, this will be for a variety of the shoes that are needed for comfort and safety for public utilities. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1840-2016, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into two universal term contracts for the option to purchase wearing apparel with Capel Advertising and Challenger Teamwear to authorize expenditure of $2 to establish a contract from the general fund, and this contract will provide recreation and park staff with uniform clothing for clothing at the recreation centers and for the maintenance staff, and the estimated total expenditure is $25,000. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1843-2016, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into five UTC contracts for the option to purchase HVAC parts and filters with Columbus Climate Controls Company, Allied Supply Company, Inc., Progress Supply, Inc., GD Supply, Inc., Doing Business As Johnstone Supply, and the American Air Filter Company, Inc., and to authorize expenditure of $5 to establish the contracts from the general fund and to waive competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of Columbus City Code. The total estimated expenditure is $250,000, and this would be used to buy HVAC parts and filters to be used by various city agencies, and I'll ask Director Lombardi to state why we're waiving the competitive bidding of this, for this ordinance. Director?
Thank you, President Protam Tyson, President Klein, members of council. As you can imagine, there are a variety of HVAC systems throughout the city. We have over 200 facilities with different air conditioning units and heating units, and to be able to just award, award one contract would be impossible because not one company can provide all the parts needed for the various manufacturers. The reason why we are waiving is to allow us to award more than one contract off of this bid, and the city code at this point does not allow the opportunity to award the same line item to more than one company. And I believe by awarding these five contracts, we will be able to provide parts and service for all the different HVAC systems that we have currently throughout the city of Columbus.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1849-2016, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into one universal term contract for the option to purchase Hewitt Packard Printer Equipment UTC with Canon Four, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $1 to establish a contract from the general fund. The total estimated expenditure is $250,000, and this will be used by all city agencies to purchase new printers, supplies, and maintenance. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1878-2016, is to amend the 2016 Capital Improvement Budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer various funds within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to modify a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Star Consultants for professional services related to HVAC renovations at the Columbus Public Health Building, and to authorize the expenditure of $460,084 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund. This, there's a modification of this contract is necessary for additional services and include third-party commissioning, additional construction management, and the Design and Construction Administration for a backup chiller. Third-party commissioning involves an independent consultant that will analyze, inspect, and review all installed systems to ensure the systems function as intended. Construction Administration involves additional onsite work by Star Consultants to ensure that the project, to ensure that the project proceeds as designed, and Star Consultants will also provide additional design consultation to ensure that the recently installed backup chiller that we had to do when we, the one just went kaput pretty quickly, we had to spend about a sufficient, a substantial amount of money to replace that one, is incorporated into the comprehensive HVAC system renovation project that's currently in the design phase. The original cost of this contract was $400,000, and now this will be the modifications, $460,084. Any more comments you want to give to, on this legislation, Director?
I think you've said it the best.
Thank you. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1879-2016, to authorize the appropriation of $158,387.60 from the unappropriated balance of the General Permanent Improvement Fund, to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Farber Corporation, and to authorize a total expenditure of $208,400 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund and the General Permanent Improvement Fund. And this is for the replacement of the heat pumps at 1393 East Broad Street, which is the Jerry Hammond Building. Correct? No, no, it's not 1393. That's the other, that's the building that we have, our, I know, it's where we host Model Cities, the old Model Cities building, but that's where we also have our Pride offices in that building. Correct? I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1907. No, we're not doing that one. I want to go to the next one. It's 1912. 1912, it's to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with RW Settlerland Building Company for construction on the Fleet Auction Lot Pavilion located at 4200 Groves Road, and to authorize expenditure of $1,661,210 from the Fleet Management Capital Fund. And Director Lombardi, can you give some information, share on this ordinance, please?
Thank you, President Protam Tyson, President Klein, members of council. This, at the time of the bid, the apparent low bidder, OPC Contracting, was disqualified for nonresponsiveness to the specifications. Some of those were a failure to list an electrical subcontractor, an incomplete bond submission, and an affidavit that was not completely filled out, and so we had to reject our bid, so we went with the second low bidder, which is RW Settlerland Building Company.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Oh, thank you very much. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Ordinance number 1921-2016, to authorize the appropriation of $775,630 from the Neighborhood Health Center Capital Reserve Fund, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with RW Settlerland Building Company for the East Side Health Center Parking Lot Expansion Phase Two, and to authorize expenditure of $775,630 from the Neighborhood Health Center Capital Reserve Fund. And this is Phase Two of a project for, again, the Health Center on East Main Street, and we just had the CEO from Primary Health, Primary One. This parking lot is next to Primary One, and this will be a new parking lot on the east side of the East Side Health Center. The parking lot will be fenced with a gate and access for 48 parking spaces. This main parking lot for the, it's the main parking lot for the East Side Health Center will also be repaired and sealed and restriped. The current parking lot does not provide sufficient parking for the staff and its patients. Moving the staff to a new lot will alleviate the parking concerns. I move for passage for this legislation.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1936-2016, to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to execute and acknowledge any documents as approved by the city attorney necessary to grant the Ohio Power Company Doing Business As AEP Non-Exclusive Electrical Utility Easement to burden a portion of the city's real property at 1198 East Main Street. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1974-2016, to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to modify the existing electric service agreement with AEP Energy for the purchase of electric power. This agreement was modified pursuant to the authority granted under ordinance 2539 of 2013, which allowed for 30% green power sourcing, whether it be wind-generated or solar-generated, and was later modified pursuant to ordinance 1151-2015, which allowed for 50% green power sourcing, as well as extended the original term from May of 2016 to May 2nd of 2018. And then ordinance, and then ordinance 1157, 1151 of 2015 also allowed for the inclusion of city-owned facilities under the purview of Department of Public Utilities. This legislation requires authority to modify the existing agreement with AEP to allow for 50% of green power sourcing to include the Department of Public Utilities, Finance and Management, Recreation and Parks, Technology, and Public Service, and the city-owned facilities under their purview, and to extend the contract termination date from May 2nd of 2018 to May 2nd of 2019. And I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 1980-2016, to authorize the city to enter into a lease agreement and supplemental lease agreement with the River South Authority in connection with the supporting redevelopment and revitalization of the Scioto Peninsula, and to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to execute the lease agreement and supplemental lease agreement. Director Lombardi, could you please add additional comments to this legislation?
Thank you, President Protam Tyson, President Klein, members of council. This is in accordance with the Scioto Peninsula Master Plan, which is part of the 2010 Downtown Columbus Strategic Plan, both of which council previously charged the Columbus Downtown Development Corporation to conduct and eventually adopt by resolutions. The CDDC presented the Scioto Peninsula Master Plan in 2013, which called for redevelopment and revitalization of the peninsula, including the now under construction Veterans Memorial Museum, and a future mixed-use development and underground parking garage in a park in a recreation area. This ordinance allows the city to continue to own the land just west of Cosi, but grants CDDC the control of the development for the underground parking garage and the park in recreation area above it. This evening, I have asked Matt Lutz from CDDC to speak on the ordinance and the project briefly.
Good evening, Mr. Lutz.
I'm Matt Lutz, the Chief Development Officer with Capital South and Columbus Downtown Development Corporation. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words to you tonight about this project. We'd like to thank city council for your continued support of the revitalization of the Scioto Peninsula. This legislation will enable us to put together a new park This legislation will enable us to put together a new park directly west of Cosi with an underground garage that will provide parking directly next to Cosi for its patrons, and a critically catalytic green space for the development of the rest of the peninsula. This is, this is an extremely important project. We want this, this green space to anchor the Scioto Peninsula the way Columbus Commons has anchored development on the, on the east side of the river. Capital South has previously built two garages in a similar way for the, for the city, the River South Garage and the Fort Enelma Garage, and so will continue to fulfill the same role and construct this facility for you. And again, we'd just like to thank the mayor and the City Council for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Dorian, do you want to make any comments about the parking garages that were going to be built by the River South?
Well, this process, thank you, Madam Chair, this process will emulate the process by which the Lazarus Building was rehabilitated and turned into such a success. So it is in the pro formas of the city to provide for it, and River South will be issuing those bonds. I cannot give you a date yet, don't know the date, but it will be soon, but the funding of it is in the city's pro formas.
And to pay the debt on these garages, how will that happen? To pay the debt on these parking garages?
That will be paid out of your city income tax set aside. Probably over a period of 25 years would be my guess at this point.
Thank you. Any questions about the garage, revitalization? No. All right. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
I now like to introduce the ordinance number 1907-2016, which will authorize the city auditor to pay the Franklin County Board of Elections for special election cost reimbursement to authorize a transfer of $1,220,000 between departments within the general fund and to authorize expenditure of $1,220,000 from the general fund. The city was required to pay for the special election. This is not an expense we neither anticipated or budgeted, and I would like to ask Mr. Dorian if he wants to make any comments regarding this legislation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and all council members. This did come as a bit of a surprise because the costs of special elections and so forth typically is billed to the city in the ensuing year. Otherwise, we would typically expect these costs next year. I have the first invoice, the first part of this bill, $664,463.65. That is intended to represent about 65% of the total cost, approximately. It was a surprise to us, as I say, in past years, we're always paid for these things in ensuing years. I think the thing that concerns me most about this in excess of a million-dollar cost, it certainly is unique in the fact that it's for this special election, and I'm sorry to say, I view it as the first step. If the proposition succeeds, it's the first step to very, very much larger bureaucracy with its bigger costs, not only in the legislative branch, but those bigger costs will spread into the administration, the administrative branch. I've seen this in the past. These costs tend to spread a great deal, and unfortunately, we would end up with at least seven council members who were only concerned about a relatively small piece of the city. So I'm afraid that these costs, if this issue succeeds, will cost us an awful lot of money, but not bring a better government. So I guess that's a bit of my bias in this respect, but this $664,000 is the first invoice as part of the total bill.
Thank you, Attorney Dorian. I now like to ask the Finance Director, Joe Lombardi, if he has any comments he wants to make on this legislation.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson, President Klein, members of council. As Mr. Dorian said, this came as a surprise to us as well. We did not have this in our general fund budget. We typically would pay these costs, I believe it's through property tax that are withheld by the Franklin County. However, we were able to get into what we call the citywide account, and that is a general fund account, and this ordinance is allowing us to transfer money so that the city auditor can make the payment to the Franklin County Board of Elections. That $1.2 million is now gone out of that account, so any services or items that we could have used that money for in that citywide account obviously is $1.2 million less now.
Thank you, Director. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or thoughts? Councilwoman Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, President Protem. Director Lombardi, you mentioned some of the services that we aren't paying for because we're spending this $1.2 million on the election. One of the things that I think is a critical economic development focus for our city is getting more kids into preschool, and I know that it's a focus of the mayor, and we allocate money towards pre-K. Do you have a sense for, you know, what this money could have paid for slots for kindergarten that we're using to braid funding with other sources?
Sure, Councilwoman Brown, President Klein, members of council. On average, I think it's a $10,000 per slot for pre-K for a student, so by doing the math, $1.2 million could have added another 120 students to a pre-K program.
Thank you, Director.
President Protem.
Yes.
If I may.
Councilwoman Mitchell Brown. Yes.
Also, Director Lombardi, if I may, would we have been able to use some of this money for police cruisers or for bicycles for our law enforcement officers, as well as assisting in the purchase of the body cameras, since we're not exactly certain what the total cost is going to be for that in our police division, as well as additional fire apparatus that would be necessary, that we continue to need within our public safety division?
Councilmember Brown, President Klein, members of council, certainly we could have used the $1.2 million for some of the body camera costs, also for bicycles for our police officers. For example, you spoke about a ladder truck.
Yes.
One ladder truck is approximately about $1.2 million.
Exactly.
That also probably equates about 20 new police vehicles, upfitting and everything, and probably about two engines for our fire department, so the $1.2 million could have been used for those items as well.
Director speaks. Would you concur with that assessment?
Yes, based on our last bids, absolutely. That would be the opportunity cost that could have been purchased toward public safety for this money, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman Protem Tyson.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown.
I don't want to belabor the point, but thank you, President Protem Tyson. So when I'm out in area commissions of associations, since I chair utilities, what I hear a lot about is streetlights, impact that not having this funding would have on additional projects. I know for the capital budget, we're able to fund some additional ones, but now know this will prevent other projects from getting funded this year. Could you speak to that as well?
Sure. Councilmember Stenziano, President Klein, members of council. In my days in public utilities, I know how tight the streetlight program is, and the $1.2 million would go a long way for streetlight projects. As a matter of fact, I believe there are three streetlight projects currently that are slated to be completed in 2017 because of funding, and certainly this $1.2 million, we could have been able to use and complete those projects. I believe one is in Valley View in the Hilltop area. Off the top of my head, I can't remember the other two, but we certainly could have completed those yet this year had, you know, with this same funding.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Brown.
Sorry, and I don't mean to belabor either, but considering the heat today, and I did just want to point out, I know Councilmember Page isn't able to be here today, and she chairs Wreck and Parks, but I believe this, this funding also could go towards our Recreation and Parks Services, and, you know, thousands of residents use these facilities. They're particularly important when temperatures have risen, and I really do think about, you know, the additional services in our Wreck and Parks facilities that this, this money could have gone towards. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown, and certainly, after hearing from Mr. Dorian, Director Lombardi, and my council colleagues, certainly now we have to pay the money up, well, part of, half the money, 60% of the money upfront, and it is a cost that we certainly weren't planning on incurring, but we do have to pay the cost. So I would ask my colleagues, I know that there's services that maybe we won't, we won't be able to have because of this, but I would ask that, to move for passage so that we can pay for this election.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. All right. I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. We have to go back. Thank you. The first is to approve the grant application of Star House seeking financial assistance to address emergency human service needs, to authorize the Director of Development to execute a grant agreement with Star House to provide operational funding, to transfer of $150,000 between the departments within the general fund, and to authorize expenditure of $150,000 from the general fund. And this legislation is being co-sponsored by councilmembers Klein and Stenziano. I know all my council colleagues certainly feel the same way, that we want to make sure that, that young people between the ages of 14 and 24 that have, that experience of homelessness have a safe and accepting place where they can connect with a concerned community. And Star House enables the youth to do their laundry, eat, rest, bathe, and receive clothing. It also acts as a place to connect to the services available through other agencies that provide educational, health, financial, food subsidies, along with job-seeking skills. If we weren't helping to support this organization, that means that an estimated 1,500 youth in Columbus may not be able to get some of the, some of the services that they need so that they can remain off the streets. So I would ask President Klein and Councilwoman Stenziano, do you want to make any additional comments? All right. Then I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And I would now like to move back to page, not back, but to page six. And it is, it's ordinance number 1973-2016 to amend the 2016 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the General Permanent Improvement Fund, and to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into grant agreements with Mary Haven and St. Vincent Family Center seeking assistance for capital costs associated with repair and upgrade of their facilities, and to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $100,000 from the General Permanent Improvement Fund. So in this legislation, Mary Haven, this is the third year of a three-year commitment. We committed $150,000 to support their capital campaign, and they have raised 1.6 million of a $2 million goal. Their campaign was intended to make possible a $9,000 square foot expansion at the main campus, and a 4,000 square foot expansion at the city, at the women's center. At minimum, these expansions will allow Mary Haven to serve an additional 350 patients each year. And also for St. Vincent's, it will, again, it's a third year of a commitment of $150,000, and St. Vincent's will, has now built a brand-new 21,000-square-foot addition to its building. They've added, this allowed them to add 17 more classrooms and provide services to 100 more kids, and they, and yearly, they work with 7,000 kids, children, and their families. And they provide mental health services to these young people. And so I would ask my colleagues to support these two organizations who are doing incredible work in our community, and I'd like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And that concludes my legislation for this evening.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. We're now at the hour for zoning, so if I can get a motion to recess, there has been a motion, and it has been seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Can we stand recess, then we'll start zoning in about one minute. Can I get a motion to dispense with a reading of the Journal? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Are there any communications or reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
How about first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee, and all members serve on that committee. In Councilmember Page's absence, I will chair zoning. Before the, before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council pertaining to speaking before council and zoning invariances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we've asked, they limit their remarks to three minutes each on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal for the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. First up this evening is 1861, 2016, to rezone 14, I'm sorry, to rezone 4965 Genda Road, being 5.1 plus or minus acres on the west side of Genda Road, 380 plus or minus feet north of Chelseaa Glen Drive from LM Limited Manufacturing District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Public Storage Inc., care of Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney. The proposed use is a self-storage facility. The city department's recommendation is approval. Greater southeast area recommendation for approval. I'd first like to amend, it's submitted to the clerk. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? We have no speaker slips. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. Next is 1885, 2016, to rezone 136 Parsons Avenue, being 1.08 plus or minus acres located at the southeast corner of Parsons Avenue and Gustavius Lane, from ARLD Apartment Residential District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Parsons Park Two LLC, care of David Hodge, attorney. The proposed use is a mixed use of commercial and apartment residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Near east area commission for approval. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. Next is 1886, 2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 335603 permitted uses and 3361.02 permitted uses for the property located at 136 Parsons Avenue to permit four ground-floor residential units in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Parsons Park Two LLC, care of David Hodge, attorney. The proposed use is a mixed use, commercial, and apartment residential development. The city's department recommendation is approval. Near east area commission approval. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. Next is 1896, 2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039R4 Residential District, 3312.49C, minimum number of parking District, 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3321.05B2 vision clearance, 3332.15R4 area district requirements, 3312.18D basis of computing area, 3332.21D building lines, 3332.25 maximum side yards required, 3332.26C3 minimum side yard permitted, 3332.27 rear yard, 3372.542 maximum lot coverage, 3372.543 building lines, and 3372.544 maximum floor area of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1336 Denison Avenue to conform two four-unit dwellings on one parcel with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is Victorian Heritage Homes LLC, care of Donald Plank Law. The proposed use is to conform two existing four-unit dwellings on one parcel. The city's department's recommendation is approval. University area commission recommendation is approval. There are no speakers on this. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. 1898-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039R4 Residential District, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3332.15R4 area district requirements, 3332.19 fronting, 3332.27 rear yard, 3332.28 side or rear yard obstruction, 3372.542 maximum lot coverage, and 3372.544 maximum floor area of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1497 to 1499 Perry Street, to permit a single-unit dwelling, a carriage house, on the rear of a lot developed with a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is Michael R. Mahaney. The proposed use is a carriage house on a lot developed with a two-unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval. University area commission approval. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? We have no speaker slips. Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. 1916-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039R4 Residential District, 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3321.05B2 vision clearance, 3332.15R4 area district requirements, 3332.21B building lines, 3332.25B maximum side yards required, 3332.26C3 minimum side yard permitted, 3372.542 maximum lot coverage, 3372.543 building lines, and 3372.544 maximum floor area of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 154 East Fifth Avenue, to conform a 15-unit apartment building and a two-unit dwelling on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is Victorian Heritage Homes LLC, care of Donald Plank. The proposed use is to conform a 15-unit apartment building and a two-unit dwelling on the same lot. The city department's recommendation is approval. University area recommendation is approval. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? We have no speaker slips. Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. Next is 1930-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039R4 residential use, 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3332.15R4 area district requirements, 3332.18D basis of computing area, 3332.19 fronting on a public street, 3332.21D building lines, 3332.25 maximum side yards required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 911 North Fourth Street, to permit a three-unit dwelling and a four-unit dwelling on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R4 residential district. The applicant is John Gleason, attorney. The proposed use is a three-unit dwelling and a four-unit dwelling on the same lot. The city department's recommendation is approval. Italian Village Commission approval. Questions or comments from my colleagues? There are no speaker slips. Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. Next is 1934-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.037R2F Residential District, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3332.18D basis of computing area, 3332.21D building lines, 3332.25 maximum side yard required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 210 Thurman Avenue, and to permit mixed commercial and residential uses with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. The applicant is Rickard, or Richard, sorry if it's a typo, Alan Seicher, P.E. The proposed use is a mixed commercial and residential development. City department's recommendation is approval. German Village Commission approval. There are no speaker slips. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. Next is 1891-2016, to rezone 3146 Hilliard Rome Road, being 4.56 plus or minus acres located on the east side of Hilliard Rome Road, 390 plus or minus feet from east of Ten Apple Road, from LC2 Limited Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Mark Bush, Capital Growth, care of Travis Munn. The proposed use is commercial development. The city's department recommendation is approval. There is no area commission. There are no speaker slips. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. 1811-2016, to rezone 1169 Chambers Road, being 2.72 plus or minus acres located on the south side of Chambers Road, 715 plus or minus feet east of Northwest Boulevard, from R World and M2 Manufacturing to AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is S.B. Chesapeake, care of Dave Perry, agent. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The fifth by Northwest Area Commission is approval. I'd first like to take it from the table. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
There are no speaker slips. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
It's passed. 1812-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3309.14A height districts, 3312.09 aisle, 33.1221D landscaping and screening, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.273 parking setback line, 3312.29 parking space, 3312.49C, minimum number of parking spaces required, 3333.18 building lines, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1169 Chambers Road, to permit multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the AR3 residential district. The applicant is S.B. Chesapeake LLC, care of Dave Perry, agent. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission approval. I'd first like to take it from the table. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
It's taken from the table. There are no speaker slips. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed. And I think that's it. I'm going to need a glass of water. Any other business to come before zoning? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 43? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. We'll soon reconvene regular meeting number 42 momentarily. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Reconvene, regular meeting number 42. Thank you, President. Yeah. Reconvene, yeah. Easy, Shoney. Can I get a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 42? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand back in regular meeting number 42. We're going to go to economic development, to Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. As you recall, we waived second reading, so she now has second reading legislation in economic development. The floor is yours.
Alrighty. We are going to go to page six. And in economic development tonight, we have ordinance 1975-2016. Could Tori Richardson from Rickenbacker please approach, as I start here? To authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with the Columbus Regional Airport Authority for the purpose of making capital improvements at Rickenbacker International Airport, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $750,000 from the Special Income Tax Fund. Hi, Mr. Richardson, thanks for coming. I was wondering if you could provide some brief background on this project and its strategic importance to Rickenbacker.
Great, be happy to do that. And thank you, Chair Brown, Council President Klein, fellow members of city council. As mentioned, my name is Tori Richardson. I'm the Vice President of Human Resources Strategy and Government Affairs with the Columbus Regional Airport Authority, and I'm here to support Legislation 1975-2016. Rickenbacker's been a long-term proposition for us, dating back to 2002, when we went through a city, county, and airport authority merger analysis. It was determined that it may never break even financially, and we've been working very hard to disprove that ever since then. In fact, last year, we were finally able to break even on an operating side, but we're still having some challenges with covering the cost of capital. And that's where partnerships come in, in our key. Our partnerships include both private and public, have mostly consisted of the Military Department of Defense, Franklin County, the City of Columbus, and the Airport Authority, as well as some private developers. But our efforts to broaden that over the last couple of years is really what's been paying off. We've been spending a lot of time trying to build up the transportation, distribution, logistics operations down there, and we've, in fact, hired a full-time person, as well as dedicated a lot more time from one of our other staff members to this effort, so that we can continue to grow that. And what really we're trying to do is market Rickenbacker, really, to the world, and we're trying to make sure that businesses are understanding the benefits of doing business in central Ohio. Those efforts have been successful, and businesses really taking off. Our international cargo has increased from virtually nothing a couple of years ago to 11 scheduled cargo flights internationally every week on the world's largest aircraft. So it is bustling with activity down there. That's bringing goods and products into central Ohio so that they can be finished, manufactured, and then shipped back out. So the first time ever, we are exporting out of Rickenbacker, out of central Ohio. And this is only happening because of the intense and focused efforts by several entities. In order to have the infrastructure in place to grow this cargo development, we partnered with Private Investments, Jobs Ohio, the State of Ohio, Franklin County, and the City of Columbus to complete over $25 million of capital infrastructure in this past year. At the end of April, we opened up a brand-new air traffic control tower, replacing a 1958 version. We also opened up the new Air Cargo Terminal Five, which opened for business, and we are already beginning to build out additional space in that because of the demand for this type of facility. The legislation that you have before you tonight, for consideration, is to formalize a partnership in this infrastructure investment. Specifically, it allocates $750,000 in funding to help pay for some of this public infrastructure, and to leverage the funding contributions of the others that I just mentioned a brief moment ago. The work includes design and construction of a cargo facility, design and construction of aircraft parking areas and servicing areas, installation of area lighting, relocation of roadways and roadway improvements, stormwater improvements, as well as relocating and extending utilities. Investing in these infrastructure projects ensures that Rickenbacker's benefits to central Ohio businesses remains, and that we are able to make it easier for others doing business. That's why the Columbus Regional Airport Authority is requesting your ongoing support in helping in these endeavors, and we would certainly request your favorable consideration. By working together, we're making Columbus stronger and improving the economic vitality of the city and the region. I thank you for your time, your understanding and consideration. Be happy to take any questions or comments that you may have.
Could you restate? You made a comment about 11 cargo flights a month, or is that 11 a year?
A week.
A week.
So we have 11 international cargo, the wide-body aircraft, the largest in the world, flying in and out of Rickenbacker every week. And the importance of that is we basically have day of, every day of week service now. So these planes are coming from Dubai, Abu Dhabi, Hong Kong, Luxembourg, all over the world, and bringing products in, and then exporting products back out.
So is the expectation to increase that number?
Absolutely, and that's why the investment in the infrastructure is necessary. We did not have the physical infrastructure in place to support that kind of growth, and we see that continuing, and we need to continue to invest in that to make sure that that continues to grow. Literally, from 2014, we had about 900,000 tons of cargo that went out on scheduled aircraft. This year already, with the first quarter, we're up to about 5,800 tons, so it's about a 600% increase. So very dramatic.
And subsequently, then, that's being moved by trucks from once it's gotten to our airport, right?
Correct. So once it gets here, it's trucked into either places for distribution, for finishing, manufacturing, and then also product is being trucked from all over the Midwest into Columbus to be exported back out. So we're getting products from New York, Chicago, Detroit, Indianapolis, Cincinnati, all over.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Richardson, for coming down here to give us a little more context. And our contribution is part of 14.5 million in capital projects, which Rickenbacker is seeking public and private funding for. What I appreciate about what you said is just the direct link at Rickenbacker between what we can import and export, and the kind of jobs, and the volume of jobs that we can create and grow here in Columbus.
Yeah, we're a great economic engine and a great partner with others. Rickenbacker, that area is about 20,000 jobs and about $2.8 billion of economic impact on an annual basis. So very significant.
That's fantastic. Thank you for sharing that background with us. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Thank you.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1991-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to modify the Harrison Park Public Art Project with Todd Keim, to change the contract name to Keim Design LLC, and to change the associated contract compliance number and vendor number. Any questions from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, may I move to small and minority business development? Thank you. We have ordinance 1760-2016, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into contract with the Finance Fund for the purpose of administering the city's of Columbus Small Business Revolving Loan Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of $34,243 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund. The services to be provided by Finance Fund are things like program design, marketing, program infrastructure, intake process, credit underwriting, closing, compliance, reporting, accounting, fiscal support, maintenance, and servicing. Are there any questions from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I'd like to move to housing, if that's alright. We have ordinance 1989-2016. We do have a speaker, if you could come to the podium while I read it, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. 1989-2016 is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an option agreement or agreements as needed to sell and transfer by quitclaim deed one parcel located at 363 Reeve Avenue in the Southern Gateway redevelopment area. This is an option agreement or sales contract to sell and transfer that property, and we're partnering with, we would be partnering with the Community Housing Network to construct a 62-unit permanent supporting housing development, and also an edible food forest, which was championed by the Parsons Avenue Merchants Association. Mr. Wilkins, you may start.
Nathaniel George Wilkins, Chairman of Solly Vacant Amendment Property North London Area. I'm all for this, and I just want to say thank you for your time. But there's one question I would like to ask. Has this property been in the land bank? And thank you for your time again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Shoney, can you speak to the history of the parcel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein, members of council. This property was in the land bank, as well as, both this property and the property associated with the next ordinance, were part of a recent RFP process that we went through to look at these properties. We're really excited about this project. It brings more permanent supportive housing to the city, something that we're desperately in need of. This is part of the Rebuilding Lives Program, where we partner with the Community Shelter Board and CHN and other providers to make sure that we keep people out of homelessness, or once we have them, or we either avoid homelessness, or once we have them into staple housing, we keep them in staple housing. So we're very excited about both of these projects in these next two ordinances, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Director Shoney. Any questions?
Thank you, Chair Warren Brown. I don't really have any questions, but just to say thank you to the Director and his team. We have lots of conversations around affordable housing, and certainly just appreciate the work of Sam work of Sam Schuler and her team at Columbus Housing Network. I thank them that they put out an RFP for this project, and that we certainly will have the needed, you know, needed affordable housing units in our community. Of course, we need lots more, but I certainly appreciate the work of his team in making this happen with C H N. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anything further? Yeah? Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Director Shoney, or perhaps the new Neighborhoods Director, Ms. Scott. I know there was a little bit of pause on this project from some community members on the south side, nothing, at least that I'm aware of, that was insurmountable, but do you have any indication of the outreach that was done with the community on these projects?
Yeah, thank you, President Klein, Madam Chair, members of council. Yes, we did some outreach to the Area Commission, to members of the Area Commission. Additionally, I know that C H N was very forthright in their plans, and so going out meeting with the Commission, they met with members of the board of the Reeve Avenue Center as well. There were concerns about having this facility adjacent to the childcare facility at Reeve. Those were addressed. I think C H N did a very good job of talking about the design and what kind of buffers there would have, and frankly, doing a good job of explaining who their clients are and who their, and what services they have to surround those clients, and make sure that they're great parts of the community as well.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And as Director Shoney alluded to, this next ordinance also deals with permanent supportive housing. Ordinance nineteen ninety dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an option agreement or agreements as needed to sell and transfer by quitclaim deed one parcel located at eighteen thirty-three South Parsons Avenue in the Southern Gateway redevelopment area. The site is the second phase of Parsons Village and will be developed as a mixed-use senior housing complex consisting of sixty-one and two-bedroom units, and this includes fifty-three rental housing tax credit units and seven market rate units. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Alright, that is all I have tonight, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee we have on the agenda is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, and in Councilmember Harden's absence, Councilmember Stenziano, the floor is yours. And feel free to go ahead and proceed to all the other committees.
I appreciate that, President Klein. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance zero one six zero dash twenty sixteen to declare the city's necessity, necessity and intent to appropriate and accept certain additional or modified fee simple title and lesser real estate in order to complete the Sullivan Georgetownsville Camp Chase Trail Connector Public Improvement Project. The city's Department of Public Service is engaged in the Sullivan Georgetownsville Camp Chase Trial Connector Public Improvement Project. In order to do this, the city must acquire certain fee simple titles and lesser real estate located near the public right-of-way of Sullivan Avenue and Georgetownsville Road in order for the department to complete this public project. Accordingly, the city intends to appropriate and accept the modified real estate in the event the city attorney is unable to either locate the owners of the modified real estate or agree with the owners of the modified real estate in good faith regarding the amount of just compensation for the modified real estate. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
I would ask you all to go back to page six in the agenda for ordinance one nine seven one dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to execute those documents necessary to release easements to clear title in the subdivision known as Barrett subdivision, so the property can be redeveloped. This ordinance in twenty fifteen occurred pursuant to two five one six dash twenty fifteen, the city of Columbus accepted easements within a subdivision known as Barrett subdivision. Department of Public Service recently received a request from Barrett S F LLC asking that the city release three easement areas within the reserved easements within the subdivision to clear title, satisfy Franklin County Engineers' Office, and redevelop the sites. After receipt of this request, the Public Service Division of Infrastructure Management verified with all the public and private utility companies that there are no public utilities or need for these easements located within the requested area, and that they have no objections to these easements being released. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, I'll move to the Public Utilities Agenda Items. First is ordinance one seven two one dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of the Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Birch Hydro, Inc., for the Cap Creamian Water Plant Lagoon Number Two Sludge Removal twenty sixteen project, to authorize the appropriation transfer of five hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty cents from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water General Obligation Bond Fund. To authorize transfers and the expenditures of up to seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eleven cents within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund, the Water Superbilled America Bonds Fund, and the Water Permanent Improvements Fund for the Division of Water, and to authorize an amendment to the twenty sixteen capital improvement budgets. This project consists of removing sludge from Lagoon Number Two, not Lagoon One, not Lagoon Three, but Two, at the Hat Creamy Cremation Water Tramment Plant. The sludge removal is necessary because discharges of lime, sludge, and carbon sludge from the water plant eventually fill up the onsite lagoons. While Lagoon Number Two is being cleaned out, the plant will switch to another onsite lagoon for discharges. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Next is ordinance one seven seven eight dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with C H two M Hill Engineers Incorporated for the Parsons Avenue Water Plant Treatment Upgrade Project in an amount of up to two million dollars, and to authorize an expenditure up to two million dollars from the Water General Obligation Bond Fund for the Division of Water. This modification, which is number four, will provide continued funding for engineering services during construction, which includes onsite construction, representation, submittal and R F I reviews, change order preparations, inspections, training, and asset management services, and preparation of records, documents, online training, and an arc flash study. If you're wondering what an arc flash study is, it's an onsite study of a facility conducted by a trained expert qualified to evaluate the electrical system, who then notes areas that could present a risk to personnel or equipment. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance one seven eight five dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with A D S LLC for the purchase of eighty flow meters and twenty-three rain gauges for the Division of Sewage and Drainage to authorize the expenditure of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars from the Sewer Operation Fund and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code Chapter three twenty-nine. This waiver of competitive bidding is only intended to cover this one-time purchase of the eighty flow meters and twenty-three rain gauges. The waiver is necessary to maintain data consistency, as data from a manufacturer other than A D S LLC could be in a completely different format from the existing database that the department maintains. The flow monitor crew is also well-trained in both A D S flow meter hardware and software. A change would require new training that would be timely and costly. The new meters themselves are needed because the current ones will stop working by the end of twenty sixteen because they run on the two G wireless network, thus the need to replace them now before the loss of communication with the meters. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And if you all could move back to page seven, it'll take us home. Next up is ordinance one three eight zero dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a contract to purchase a fourteen-foot step van for the Division of Power with F Y D A Freightliner Columbus, Inc., and to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the Electricity Operating Fund. This ordinance is to establish a contract to purchase the step van. The step van will be used by the Division's underground crew to transport employees, tools, materials, and equipment needed to test, repair, and replace cables and transformers that are in the city's underground network. This purchase has been approved by the Division of Fleet Management in support of the mayor's Get Green Columbus Initiative. This unit has clean burn technology. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance one seven zero two dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a contract with Bis Noos, Inc., for the purchase of a Vulcan screenings press unit model E W P dash twenty fifty slash twelve hundred, and associated parts for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of thirty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the Sewage System Operating Fund. The purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the entering of this contract. The Vulcan screenings press unit will be used at the southerly wastewater treatment plant for the repair and maintenance of compactors. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And finally, we have ordinance one seven five three dash twenty sixteen to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company, Inc., for the purchase of a backhoe loader with bucket for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars from the Sewer Operating Fund. This new equipment will be replacing the old backhoe loader. The loader with bucket supports, again, the mayor's Get Green initiative by reducing diesel emissions because of the certified Tier Four final emission standards, and has been approved by the City of Columbus Fleet Management Division. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, I have nothing else this month.
Thank you, Chairman Stenziano. Any other business, colleagues? Can I get a motion to recess? Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We do have seven non-agenda speakers. We'll take them in the order that they signed up, and we'll take those momentarily.